All right, we might as well get started. Hopefully Jay is here soon. We've got a few things before we have to vote anyway. So I'll call to order the council meeting on February 14th at 7:32. Happy Valentine's Day. I know this is exactly who you want to share the day with. And first up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen is delayed. Alder Radafrada?
Here.
Alder Earhart?
Here.
Alder Herps?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You do have a form, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, public appearances. We've got a bunch of things here, non-genomics, new appointments. First is a proclamation for African American History Month and recognizing February 2023 is African American History Month. Whereas the observance of African American History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas, in the face of incredible prejudice and hardship, African Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life through courage, determination, faith, and resolve. Their fight for equality, representation, and respect motivates us to continue working for a more promising, peaceful, and hopeful future for every American. And whereas, we honor the extraordinary contributions made by African Americans throughout history through economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, renew our commitment for equality, representation, and respect for all. And whereas, the Black History Month 2023 theme, Black Resistance, explores how African Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, especially the racial terrorism of lynching, racial pogroms, and police killings since the nation's earliest days. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and our nation. Now therefore, in recognition of African Americans past and present in our community, I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, hereby proclaim February 2023 to be African American History Month in Pittsburgh and encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. All right, moving along. Next is recognition of and presentation of Bicycle Friendly Award. We had some businesses come up a couple of months ago, maybe a month and a half ago, to be recognized because we had a number of businesses here in Pittsburgh that were recognized as bicycle friendly in all levels, from gold to silver, platinum. And we have another organization that has been recognized now as well, and very excited that Bike Pittsburgh has been honored and recognized as a platinum level organization as well. So we have some members of Bike Pittsburgh here. Very excited that we have yet another platinum level group here in Pittsburgh. All of that obviously leads to hopefully the city becoming a gold or a platinum level in the future as well, and we'll find that hopefully soon. And I'll let-
May.
May, all right, sounds good. And I'll let Steve go ahead and speak a little more to this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Darrell Jordan, our Vice President, and Bill Jetzer, who is the Secretary, and I'm the Treasurer of Bike Pittsburgh. Our President, Tony Hartman, could not make it tonight. We feel very proud to be a platinum bicycle-friendly business. There are more than 1,500 bicycle-friendly businesses in the country, but only about 80 of them are platinum. We were one of two this round who got platinum on the first try. The other was the Coalition around Orlando and Clearwater, Florida, who have been, just on a tear, they have the most bicycle-friendly businesses in the country. It seems that becoming a platinum bicycle-friendly bicycle advocacy organization, recruiting other bicycle-friendly businesses is really key. So we did that well, and here we are. So thank you. We really appreciate it. Gentlemen, would you like to say anything to add?
I'm impressed with the effort. Hello. Congratulations to us, mostly to the efforts, you know, of Steve and Tony and everybody else on the board to promote bicycling in Pittsburgh and to help bicycling become a featured mode of transportation and sport in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thanks, Darrell. Our mission is to make bicycling and walking safer, more easier, and more fun in Pittsburgh. So we'll continue to work on that. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. When you talk about the more things we're going to do, I know that we're going to have some bicycle stations installed here this spring, and there's a lot of other things we're doing as well. All right, we'll stay on the theme of biking, and we have a mayoral appointment. We had a vacancy on the Bike Committee. Unfortunately, a person passed away, so we have an opening for a term that ends in 2025. We are fortunate enough to have a very qualified candidate to take over. So if Dawn, if you'd like to come up and just say, you know, a few words on why you're interested, all of them work, whatever is easiest for you.
So good evening. Pleased to be here on Valentine's Day and having the reading of the Black History Month proclamation. And pleased to join the committee. I am Dawn Krim, Dr. Dawn Krim, have been a resident of Pittsburgh for 25 years and was on the original Ped Bike Ad-Hoc Committee when we began talking about bike-friendly communities and what more we could do for biking and pedestrian safety here in Pittsburgh. I've worked at the university currently, but previously has served as a Secretary with Governor Evers for his first term and Assistant State Superintendent as well. And so have been a part of the Pittsburgh community and serving since I arrived, helped build the Dream Park Kids Crossing and the playground in Rose Commons. So have been a contributor for the majority of my time here. And now have the ability to merge my love of biking and my love for public service. So I'm glad to serve.
Thank you. Any questions at all?
Glad to have you, Dawn. We were on the first bike, I don't think it was a committee yet, it was like an exploratory inaugural committee, so I'm glad you're here and look forward to biking with you soon.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, do you want to do a motion, Joe, to approve?
Sure. Move to approve.
Sent by Julia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to our first public hearing. And so our public hearing and our resolution are 1223, approving the 2023 water impact fees. I'll open the public hearing. This is something we actually had done and approved actually a month and a half ago or so, but we didn't do a public hearing. We should have done a public hearing at that point in time, so we are going to have to re-approve this with a public hearing at this point in time. I do not have anyone who's here to register to speak unless there's someone online. No, okay. So seeing no one, then I will close this public hearing. And now go to the next public hearing on the proposed 2023 update to the ARPA-TID closure investment plan. And I don't believe there's anyone here. Oh, we have one person, all right. That will be, you can finish filling it out after you're done speaking, Steve. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We at Bike Pittsburgh really appreciate the council's efforts on behalf of biking, putting in the Wail and Road bike lanes, the additional bike parking, the matching funds for any grants that we may be able to get for signage for the Pittsburgh Greenway System, and one more which I'm forgetting right now. But thank you, and we support the plan.
Thank you. Might have been Phase Two of the bikes, the e-bikes, maybe? I don't know.
Oh, yes. It was the funds for Phase Two of the Madison B-cycle Expansion to Pittsburgh.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Very important. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else that wants to speak on this public hearing, I will close this public hearing as well. Then we can go ahead to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Sent by Jay, seconded by Randy. Anything people want to do separately? Doesn't look like anyone wants to do anything separately, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. Few items of note for everyone. As a reminder, February 21st is a primary. It will be only for Supreme Court as there are no other races that require a primary. There have been over 2,000 absentee ballots requested and over 900 returned so far to the Clerk's Office. And I'm also pleased to report that the voting equipment was tested recently and has passed the testing requirements. The library will be closed on February 21st for new shelving installation. The Ag and Rural Affairs Committee will have its annual listening session on February 21st at 4:00 PM located at the Four Winds Farm near the intersection of Adams and Fish Hattery Roads. The Police Department will be holding a community meeting on February 22nd at the Redeemer City Church. And the Committee of the Whole Topics, I want to put out a call to the Alders that if you have a particular topic or two that you would perhaps like to learn more about, to let me know. I'll follow up with an email on this topic. There is some time available yet in the February Committee of the Whole, so if there's something that staff could be reasonably expected to put together in short order, we can take a look at that. If you do have something that you'd like to see on a future Committee of the Whole agenda, if you could reply to that email to me that I'll drop out later this evening, no later than Thursday, that would be appreciated. Last two items. Our Planning and Zoning Department has been quite busy. They have the teen center, South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood, Greenfield Neighborhood Plans, and our Sustainability Plans. All of those RFPs have been released and are available for consultants to take a look at and submit proposals. So thank you to Deanna and her team for working to get all of those out so that we can start getting some RFPs back. And then finally, while we all know all of our city departments and employees work hard every day and address problems that arise in our community and affect our residents, I do want to take a moment to recognize Jill Mccone and Mandy Miller and the rest of the Senior Center team. As we all know, there was a heck of a situation tossed at them in regards to providing meals for our senior citizens that use the meal services both at the Senior Center and also get home-delivered meals. And they really went together very quick. Their care for our community was quite evident in how fast they could pull together a solution to ensure that all of our residents who use those meal services were able to continue to get meals. And I also want to recognize the businesses and restaurants in our community that also stepped up to help our community in a time of need as well. So thank you to everybody involved, and again, want to recognize Jill and Mandy and the rest of the team at the Senior Center.
I don't know if you mentioned this last meeting, but how many current positions are we recruiting for?
Last count I had from Human Resources is we have 17 open recruitments going on for a variety of different positions through the city. As you've heard various times, I think a few of you, there are some interviews taking place last week and this week and scheduled for next week, so all those processes are in a variety of different stages. But Human Resources and hiring managers have been quite busy.
Other questions for Chad at all? All right, seeing none, we can go on to Plan Commission. Ready?
Very good. Motion to approve Resolution R-1823, formerly PP-2490-23, approving preliminary plat request, PP-249023, by Terrell Walter, agent for Nine Springs Hill, Inc., to create a preliminary plat to create lots for mixed-use development off County Highway MM. Second.
All right, sent by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Parks approve?
Yes, we approve.
All right, we've got Brian here in chambers and Terrell's online. Brian, you gonna take control or go ahead and go for it?
I could. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Let me just share my screen here. Well, thank you very much. Glad to be here again tonight. Brian McSion with Vandewall and Associates. Just to give a quick overview of what brought us back, because when you look at the plan that was previously approved by the community and the plan that has currently been working its way through the approval process, you'll see a lot of similarities. It effectively comes down to a couple of negotiations with adjoining properties that were not able to be fruitful, did not move forward, so we had to go back and redesign some of the grading. At the same time, we are preserving the street right-of-way for Lonny Hill Court, and that will be improved as a public street on the southern side of the project or plan right. But other than that, we took the opportunity to integrate some of the comments and discussions that we had had with this body, with staff as well, in refining the plan, but the overall intent is still intact. So you'll see a lot of similarities between what was approved and what's being proposed. We appreciated the opportunity to talk with the Plan Commission a little bit about the parking components with the senior housing and agreed with their request to continue to work with staff to see if there are opportunities to address some underground parking in that in a financially feasible way, and we will continue to do that between now and when we bring SIPs forward on that project. So we're excited to be back, appreciate all the conversation, and look forward to continuing the dialogue as we move into implementation yet again.
All right. Any questions, comments at all? All right, seeing none, I guess we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next one, Randy, which is the same project.
Correct, yes. Motion to approve Ordinance 2023-O-01, formerly RZ-2491-23, zoning ordinance amendment granting general implementation plan zoning for rezoned request, RZ-2491-23, by Terrell Walter, agent for Nine Hills Springs, Inc., to amend zoning for property from PDD-GIP, which is Planned Development District, General Implementation Plan, to PDD-GIP to allow a process mixed-use development off County Highway MM.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Plan approve?
Plan approved.
Did Park approve? All right, and anything you want to add, Brian? Same project.
No, other than just to again echo our appreciation for the conversations to date and looking forward to moving forward on it.
Yeah, I just had one question that Deanna wasn't able to answer for me, and that is, on this building B11, that's zoned commercial?
Correct. That will have some commercial uses there at the entrance along MM. And then-
Okay, because in the description, it sounded like that building was going to be like your clubhouse or gathering place or-
We anticipate that serving a couple of functions, both with the senior housing but also as an amenity and a component for the general public as well. So we're still in refinement of what the commercial uses will be on all three spots that are identified for mixed use and are looking forward to, you know, testing the market to see what's out there. We've had some discussions preliminarily with staff about some opportunities, and we'll continue to pursue those.
Well, that was going to be the next question, is what types of commercial uses do you expect could possibly be viable there, seeing as it is about as far away from MM as a building could be and still be in your development?
Yes. Well, a couple of things, as it is-
Hey, Brian, I'll jump in there if you agree with it. Good evening, council members, Mayor Richardson. Thank you all for the opportunity this evening. Terrell Walter, Executive Vice President with Royal Capital. So Brian, we're looking at the B11 building, which sits to the west of the site. That building, as you've alluded to, council member, does feature a lot of amenities that would be conducive and is location for the residential feel of the site. We do, just by way of all intention, have a larger fitness facility that will be located in there that could be offered at low to no cost for a gym operator, someone that's looking to operate a facility that has the wherewithal to be able to do so and could go through a vetting process by way of analysis, to not only serve our residents but also the greater community. And again, we've set this up in a way where we believe from our side that it serves as a key component of not only this site but a connector in this area. And we want it to be a viable opportunity that we could actively, that we could activate, excuse me, with or without there being an actual commercial user there. We are locating more of our well-known, active, and, you know, well-occupied uses, I would say, closer to MM, that include a cafe, juice bar, you know, golfing, putting simulation, you know, those type of deals, as well as our senior community center on the B1 building.
I think the one thing I would add in as well is that, you know, that location, while remote from MM, does have a lot of visibility out to the 14 corridor, will have fantastic views out across the horizon, which could appeal to, you know, some specific users that would be looking for more of a destination location. But you're right, in terms of drive-by visibility and access, it's a little bit different user than what you could potentially locate along MM.
Well, like any kind of, like if you had a hair salon or, you know, the kinds of neighborhood retail we usually think of, you know, someone going there is going to have to drive through your whole development just to get there. And that's going to make it difficult for any kind of small business to make it there unless they've got a gigantic advertising budget, which is not normally the case with a small business. So I just wondered what the, I wondered what the vision was. And the other question I had is, I realize this is a GIP, not an SIP, but are you anticipating those two stormwater ponds to actually be big rectangles?
That is in the works. Kevin Jeska from JSD is online as well, happy to answer that. But a lot of the grading challenges of this site are something that we're balancing, but at the same time, we're not quite to the landscape design pieces, which will be looking at ways to address Deanna's comments about the slope and breaking that up and making that an enjoyable environment. At the same time, we recognize the stormwater is a functional but also a asset if designed correctly. So that is something we will be looking at very closely as we move into the next phase.
Dave?
Have your engineers done soil borings here? I hate to keep bringing this up on this site, but I feel I have a responsibility to keep asking this a question.
Oh, yes. And Kevin, I don't know if you want to speak to the numbers, but there have been multiple rounds of soil borings throughout the site, done both in the street right-of-ways, the building pad locations, coupled up with structural engineering looks to understand the footings and foundations approach for all the projects and then the utility design. So there have been a significant number of soil investigations throughout the site.
I'll also add all the Herps that the city consulted with an outside engineering firm to review the reports that have been completed on those soil borings as well.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved.
All right, thank you.
All right, one more.
One more. Motion to approve Resolution R-2123, formerly FP-24923, approving final plat request for FP-24923 by Phil Sfiam, agent for Pittsburgh Lands LLC, to approve a final plat for Terravessa to create 82 lots, including 72 billable lots for property in Terravessa located off Lacy Road.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Park approve?
We approve.
All right, and I don't think anyone's here for this. Do you want to speak to the remaining?
Sure, give a brief overview of it. The request is for a final plat to create 82 lots as the third addition to Terravessa plat. This replating is a portion of the preliminary plat approved by Plan, Plan Commission November of 2022, which proposed 297 lots.
I know the lots are going very quickly in there, so this is kind of the next phase of that, and it's really following the plan that they originally had laid out, it's just going in phases, and this is the next phase.
Right.
Any other questions at all? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for Plan?
No, nothing else.
All right, Public Works. Dave, you got a long list today.
Yep. First one, move postponement of Resolution R-23722, accepting subdivision improvements to Phase B of the plat of Highfield.
Second.
Sent by Jay?
Not ready. Everything was not ready for that to be approved, so we are postponing. I would say postpone, I move to postpone until February 28th meeting.
And I'll just add, from the staff perspective, I think we have worked out all of the components of these two items. However, because this was postponed at the Board of Public Works on their February 6th meeting to their February 20th meeting, it seems appropriate to do the postponement here at the council level till the 28th.
All right. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that one's postponed. Next one to Dave?
I move postponement of Resolution R-23822, accepting subdivision improvements for Phase 1A of the plat of Highland Reserve.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Is that what Public Works did too?
Yep.
All right, same project. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's postponed too. Next one.
Move approval Resolution R-0123, authorizing purchase of a valve turner.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, I know this one needs a two-thirds majority just because there's some changes in funding to it as well. What's this one about, Dave?
So on our water mains, part of our maintenance, we need to, we need to open and close the valves on those, on the hydrants. And it's a, it's a pretty manual process. If you had to take a wrench or even a large socket and try to open one, you'd probably get a couple done a day. So this is to purchase a, it's a mechanized device with a motor on there that we can pull it up, hook it up, and open, open and close the valve easily. What they've told us, this will also allow them to do is do a better job of flushing. They can segment areas where they're flushing to get better flow and isolate a little bit better, so they feel it'll improve the quality of our water system also. Plus, we need to be cognizant of repetitive motion injuries, and this should reduce that probability quite a bit.
Any questions, Jay?
Yeah, at $83,000, do you have any idea how I can get into the business of selling valve turners?
I would, I would, I would welcome some competition in it, Jay, but I think it's a relatively small, it's a niche market, I think.
Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just would add, Dave, it's a little bit more than the hydrants is the valves that blow the surface of the street also.
Yeah.
That needs to be turned, and with that, you know, a little bit more maintenance, and you got to loosen up a lot of sediment and everything else like that. So when you said hydrant, I just wanted to make sure people understand that it's also below the surface of the street.
Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one.
Next, I move approval Resolution R-0223, authorizing Dane County Services for stormwater permit review and erosion control inspection in 2023.
Second.
Sentenced by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and Dave, go ahead.
We have been contracting this out to the county at least since 2017 for this, but it is our hope, maybe we can let Tim speak to this, but it's our hope that we will internalize this within the next couple of years possibly and do this, do this function ourselves. But we didn't feel it was quite, you know, the right time to do this. The Dane County, you know, they're, they're overseeing multiple jurisdictions, so they're very well qualified to, to do this at this time.
All right, just kind of continuing to ask, well, Jay?
Yeah, what exactly is it that the county is doing? Because I've read through this whole thing and I don't understand what precisely they're doing that we can't do already.
I, I think it's manpower, you know, it's, it's manpower, person.
We, we could do it if we had the enough capacity, but with all the projects going on right now, it's, it's more of just trying to find ways to outsource what we can.
All right, so that doesn't answer my question, which is what are they doing?
Oh, we have to, we, we have to have a permit every year, you know, we have to have a, we have to have a permit for an operator stormwater system, and, you know, there's compliance issues with that, reviews, you know, number, number of things. It's not just checking the, checking the forms, it's inspections and, you know, I think it's mostly, Jay, it's poring over a myriad of documents related, related to this and to see that we are in compliance with the state, you know, for our permit.
Every project that comes through has to make sure that they're doing the stormwater appropriately and taking care of water and also checking the erosion controls.
So the county is, like, every time we have a development plan, the county is reviewing that for us?
The county will, will review those permit and plan applications, and then they also will come out and do the inspections of those sites for us.
All right, yeah, because I think we, I recall us doing all that work internally previously.
Yeah, it's, it's fully our intent now, you know, we have a full-time stormwater engineer and a part-time that I believe next year we'll probably be in a position to do that. I, I don't want to put Tim on the spot, you know, he's pretty new, but I, the board has expressed that desire to him, that we would like to internalize that as, as soon as possible.
All right, we got Julia and then Gabriella after that. Julia?
No, I want to mention that in page 396 is a description on all the services that I provide.
All right, thank you. Gabriella?
Yeah, another note that my understanding is that we do bill some of these back to the developer under certain circumstances, so not all of it is, some of it is a pass-through cost, so.
I presume that some of this is covered through the stormwater utility or most of it?
Fees and stuff like that are, yeah, we, we, we charge for all that stuff.
Yeah, it's not coming out of the general fund.
Yeah. Anything else? Seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next one?
Move approval Resolution R-0423, granting an underground electric easement in Outlot 5 in Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Sentenced by Julia, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Plan approve?
Plan Commission approved.
All right, and what's this?
If you look at, if you go down Seminole Highway, you'll see there's some, some overhead power lines in the area where we're doing the work. And what this, MG&E will be putting those underground, they're not charging us for that. They need to go underground as part of the, the work on Seminole, the intersection of Lacy. But they do need a, they do easement across Outlot 5 to, to bury those facilities, and so that's, that's what this is about again. They're, they're not char, there's no cost to us, but we have to provide a, electric underground easement for them.
All right. See any questions? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Move approval Resolution R-0523, 2023 forklift purchase.
Second.
Sentenced by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this?
Currently, when, when things are delivered, you know, to the maintenance facility or other areas, we use a front-end loader to unload and move them around or move things around the shop. And over, over the years, we found that that, that is being used quite often in our other projects, things going around the city. And it's not quite the right tool for this. And so, a number of years ago, they proposed purchasing a fork truck to, a forklift to, you know, to have that dedicated facility for safer loading, unloading of, of deliveries. And so that's, that's what it's about, this has been in the equipment CIP.
Any questions at all or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved. Next one?
Move approval Resolution R-1223, proving the 2023 water impact fee rate.
Second.
Sentenced by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, next one, Dave?
So this was, you know, this was presented before us, it's been 20, I believe 2010 since we last revised this rate. I think everyone was here when the presentation was made on what the proposed new impact fee rates were. And again, this, we've seen this come back and forth, we had a little bit of a miscue, but Public Works approved this. And again, we've all, I think we've all reviewed this or have seen, seen the results of this, of the consultant that was hired to do this study for us.
All right. Jay?
Do, did we, did Public Works have any discussion about doing this on a more regular basis than every 10 years?
We have not, Jay, but certainly something we could, we could, could put on the agenda.
Because it just seems like if we do it more regularly, it doesn't seem like such a big bite all at once.
Well, we might not have to hire a consultant to do it, possibly, could internalize it.
Seems like the idea for the future?
Tim, Tim, are you listening out there?
I'm sure he is.
I am listening.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Tim.
Put that on your, put your, put Alder Allen's suggestion on your plate. I, I agree, that is a good suggestion.
All right. Seeing nothing else on the item on the agenda, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Next, the move approval Resolution R-2623, accepting agreement for engineering services for Fitch-Rona Road reconstruction.
Second.
Sentenced by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
What's this?
So essentially from Fitch-Rona Road, part, partway up the hill on Fitch-Rona, is that me? Okay.
All right. It stopped, so.
My chair is hitting the thing. A redesign of that, that road, I think you're all aware of the issues we have with water, water across the road, which we're trying to address, you know, with the stormwater, with Goose Lake, but condition of the road itself with the development around there, we need to improve that, that section of road. And so we select the city, solicited bids and selected a consultant to perform these engineering services on the, on the road. I believe this is 312,000 for the engineering contract.
All right, any questions on this one? Gabriella?
Yeah, I just want to bring up some things that we talked about in Finance, I was asking about, you know, obviously the Goose Lake Stormwater Project is a big one, and my question was just about how that project intersects with the road reconstruction and how much that's being factored. I, in the, when, from what I read from the design contract, it didn't specifically call out the Goose Lake project. It said stormwater, obviously, but that's a, it's a big issue. So I just wanted to see how those projects intersect. And then also I had a concern about the town of Verona and their responsibility with that road, given the, the jurisdiction aligns. And then just an overall concern about staff, staff capacity to do this project, given the fact that we've been without a transportation engineer for, I mean, probably close to half a year at this point. So I just have some concerns about this project and I'm, I'm going to support this, but I, I would like, and I know we have a lot going on in Public Works, but I would like some more information about this when, when we're able to, just given the complexity of this project.
Thank you for raising those issues, Gabriella. We, Jim, I believe we, we discussed the timing, that was one of the big topics when we had this before Public Works, the timing of this, along with the Goose Lake outlet resizing, that we would be trying to coordinate that work together was, was one of the topics. I, I can't really comment or I don't have, you know, as far as how much we're going to get the town to kick in. That's a continuing negotiation or is it?
Yeah, well, good luck.
Yeah, yeah. Blood, you know, can't get blood out of a turnip, I guess. But, you know, the time, we are, we are trying to coordinate it with the improvement, you know, the outlet on Goose, on Goose Lake, I guess. The other, the other ones I can't really speak to right now, Gabriella, I, I understand the bottleneck, you know, with not having a transportation engineer.
Chad, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'll just relay what I had shared at, at Finance Committee when Alder Gerhardt had posed these questions. We certainly are planning to time this road project in coordination with the Goose Lake project. We don't want to do these road improvements without having addressed the Goose Lake situation so that, you know, we would still have potential flooding issues that would cause issues with a newly reconstructed road. I have asked Tim to provide me an update on the latest status of the Goose Lake project, which I'll be happy to share with Council once I receive that. I had an update two or three months ago from one of our stormwater engineers, and my recollection is, is that a solution has been identified to address the Goose Lake flooding issue, and it's a matter of designing and obtaining the permits for that particular solution at this point in time. So, but again, we will coordinate that. And in regards to conversations with the town of Verona, we have engaged in some conversation with them last year about cooperatively doing this project. I will say that there certainly are some challenges to overcome as it relates to any contributions from the city of, I'm sorry, from the township of Verona. I will say we do have grant funding for a portion of this project. I believe if my recollection is correct, we received transportation funding for about 50% of the project from Lacy Road to Nesbit Road, so some of it will receive grant funding. And then finally, on the capacity side of things, I appreciated Aldo Gerhardt's recognition to the staffing capacity in the engineering department. And really where we're at with this particular project is, it's likely to be a reconstruction project tentatively right now in 2025. Of course, things could change there, and this design will take place as we lead up to the, the reconstruction. But also one of the challenges we're facing is, is that that road is just in need of reconstruction, and we really don't have a lot of choice.
Julia?
So no, I want to echo what Gabriella mentioned about, you know, the contribution of the town of Verona to this project. Have we contacted them about this agreement? Have we reached out to them and?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, we spoke to them last year, as I had mentioned, and those discussions have not led to any sort of fruitful resolution that they're going to contribute.
Much like they're on about it, Nesbit, they should have contributed 25% to and they did not.
They have to put a toll on there that.
But it's, I mean, the, the road itself is very unsafe right now. I mean, there's a neighborhood right there and people, or bike path right there, I mean, biking, running, walking down that road is pretty dangerous right now, so there's a big safety component that will help as well with this. Anything else? Seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved. One more.
I move approval Resolution R-2723, approving agreement with TDS Metacom LLC, TDS, for work in public right-of-way.
Second.
Sentenced by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this, Dave?
So we saw the presentation by TDS, you know, it's their intent to bring fiber into the majority of the homes in, in Fitchburg, and to do that, you know, they'll be working in the public right-of-way, and this sets forth kind of the rules, rules and process and permission for them to, to do this work and for the city to, to bill for, for, you know, our costs incurred for, with some of this.
All right. Questions at all? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else?
I just had one thing from Public Works, you know, I, we saw some complaints, you know, last time with the, with the, with the snow, and I just want to add, what people don't realize with the snow like that, our trucks have a hard time pushing it because the, it got, it froze before the snow came. And where they have a long straight stretch, they do pretty well, but if they get around corners and cul-de-sacs, they were losing traction, they just could not push it. So I know many people, you know, had, sympathetic for the large banks they had, but, you know, the, the trucks, there was just too much weight, they couldn't necessarily move it very easily, where they had to slow down to go around places, so. I know you've all got calls, so.
Yeah, I know my mom's mailbox, she doesn't live in Fitchburg, it's somewhere else, but her, my last got taken out by all that heavy snow getting plowed, it's, it's pretty, it's really dangerous in some ways.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to Park Mission.
Yeah, so we met on February 2nd, we discussed some of the resolution that we just approved, and then we discussed the resolution about ARPA and deed closure, and the Park Commission is going to keep all the project that we have there related to park, that they eventually want to see those, you know, being done. We also talked about Maggo Park Tree Removal Updates. As you know, the park and forestry crew are working to remove some hazard tree located in the Maggo Park. And there have been some discussion with some of the neighbors, but park staff, park staff is recommending continue, you know, maintaining the cleaning and, and also maintaining all the walking trails in Maggo Park safe, accessible and maintained. So, but there are some neighbors that they are complaining that we are widening our trail too much and they don't like it, but Plan Commission decided, Park Commission decided we need to continue with the maintenance. So we discussed also the Stony Prairie Park Master Plan, and we also had an open house, what was it, last week? And also this is going to be on March 1st, this is going to be an open meeting for the Terravessa Agricultural Park. I don't remember, maybe you chat know when is, where is this meeting? I think it's here? I don't remember.
The one that's going to be upcoming?
It's a public meeting, an open house, to share the concept.
Yeah, I don't think it's been formally scheduled, it's tentatively scheduled for March 1st.
March 1st, yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we finalized it yet.
Okay, so everyone is invited to that. And then another update, the Inclusive Playground Committee, we, we continue meeting every month. We already ordered two shades for the splash pad and one from the Inclusive Playground that is going to be installed in the spring. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Library Board?
We are meeting tomorrow, and as the administrator mentioned, the library's going to be closed on February 21st. We are getting some, we finally got some shelving that's been on order for a long time that displays picture books in the children's section better. The shelving that's been there just really isn't suitable for how those types of books need to be displayed. So apparently it's going to, what I understand is it's going to be a team effort by basically all of the library staff and I guess some people from city maintenance to construct these shelves and put them in place. So it's not, and, you know, that, that section of the library would have to be closed anyway because you can't really have people milling about with big chunks of steel being moved around, so. But everything should be back to normal on the 22nd.
All right, thank you. Mission, any?
Um, I think you're all aware, Jill submitted, you know, three items in the, the ARPA fund, you know, an upgrade to the audio AV equipment, kitchen remodel to possibly a commercial kitchen, and then replacement of tables, tables and chairs that are 15 years old. kitchen and then replacement of tables, tables and chairs that are 15 years old. There was a travel show at the, that they had, 50, 50 people attended, they've already signed up 16, so they think those spaces will go quickly. If anyone is available on April 23rd, you know, they have the breakfast, pancake breakfast and they need volunteers to help man that. It's from eight to 12 on Sunday, April 23rd and they expect 600 people or more. And the last thing, there is tax help for seniors through AARP. They'll, they'll take signups to help with that through March 30th. So if you are watching tonight, you're senior, please, if you need help, please consider that. That's all.
All right, thank you. RCC?
We met yesterday and we discussed the ARPA TID plan, like as it was discussed in all committees, they came up with a couple of ideas that I'm going to take a look at as possible amendments. We also had a good, great discussion about the tree protection ordinance from our forester, Anna Healy, and Linda Brewer, the Chair of Tree Advisory, that is very far along and is very close. So someone, as someone that was part of those early conversations, I'm very excited to see the state it's in and that it's, that it's very imminent in terms of coming to council. And I, I hope that a lot of the council members have seen it through all the various committees that it has gone through. So that's exciting. Also exciting news about the sustainability plan, as Administrator Breckland mentioned, the RFP is out and we, the bids are due on February 24th and we do anticipate multiple bidders since multiple consultants have clarified, asking questions to Phil Groupie. So we do expect multiple bids. We'll do interviews in March and then after the contractor is selected, the process could begin as soon as April. So that's very exciting. There was a question, we had some discussions, there's some, our sustainability specialist does some energy benchmarking and kind of, kind of the state of the city in terms of our energy use, which I can share when that report is finalized. But as a part of that conversation, we talked about electric vehicles versus gas powered vehicles. And the question came up about the Ford Lightnings that we had ordered for parks and I believe the water utility. Chad, do you know any updates about, about those? My guess is that no, there's no updates, but I'm curious.
It's ironic, I was thinking about this a couple of weeks ago, what I, and I don't have an update, but I'll, I'll inquire and see what the status of that is and share with the group.
Yeah, certainly not a priority, but it's just, you know, it's exciting. So everyone's eager to hear, to hear more. And then the recycling calendar and some recycling information was mailed to all households that, that do, that have, that participate in pelletary solid waste. So hopefully you've seen that or will see that soon. We also got an update about holiday collections. Apparently we collected 600 pounds of, of Christmas and holiday lights that were broken, people delivered, and also over 900 Christmas trees were picked up. So good usage of that service that we pay for. Hopefully, you know, everyone finds it relevant. And then one note too, it was the Fitchburg Recycling Drop Off Site, you know, that we always have issues with in terms of the volume that's coming through there. It was realized recently that Google Maps just has it listed as a recycling drop off site and hasn't, there's no clarity there that it's meant for city of Fitchburg residents. So people that are just searching for recycling site might come and without any ill intent come and not realize that it's just, it's not for everybody, it's just for Fitchburg. So we're trying to get that updated so it says Fitchburg in it so that there's more clarity when people are searching for it. So hopefully that will be coming soon. And that's it for RCC.
All right, thank you. What about TTC?
TTC, we had an intro to our new Public Works Director, Tim, so that was a nice little conversation, hearing about his background. And as we noted before, we're still without a transportation engineer, so that's frustrating, but hopefully that will be remedied. It's, it's been a, TTC has been staffed by lots of different staffers in the last few months, so we're hoping that we can get someone in, in the near future. And then we had a discussion about the ARPA TID investment plan and that's all.
All right, thank you. Sita.
Yes, motion to approve Resolution R-229-22 approving the 2023-2025 Venture Debt Fund Participation Agreement between the Madison Development Corporation and the City of Fitchburg.
Second.
Sent by, I'll give Randy that one. Did Sita approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this about?
I see Misty's on the call. Could you explain this one, Misty?
Sure. So the city has participated in the revolving loan fund with Madison Development Corporation for many years now. It's a three-year contract that is up for renewal. So assuming we want to continue participating in this program, we need to renew our contract. We don't currently have any loans outstanding with this MDC program, but it is a tool that has been helpful in the past to get biotech companies in particular to locate here in Fitchburg. So we'd like to keep that as an option.
All right, any questions or comments at all? Seeing none, we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed, say nay. That is approved. Anything else for Sita?
No.
All right, then Ag and Rural Affairs.
Ag and Rural Affairs has not met since the last council meeting, but as Administrator Breckland mentioned earlier, the Ag and Rural Affairs is having a listening session next Tuesday, the 21st at 4:00 PM at Four Winds Farm.
All right, thank you. EMS?
We have not met.
All right, Bike Committee.
No updates since the last time we met.
All right, Tree Advisory.
We met on February 9th. We discussed the tree preservation ordinance and then it's coming to the committee of the whole next week for a presentation. And then if we get good feedback from all of you, the idea is to move it to Park Commission for referral and then move it to, to the council for approval. So then we also discuss all the activity that is, that are going to happen for the 2023 Arbor Day Tree Planting Event. It's going to happen in June, in April. So we are working through with the Madison Canopy Tree to create, to plant a couple of, around a 77 tree that we got for free. The idea is to, to plant those in the healthy neighborhood, especially here in the north part of Fish Hager Road and in Southdale. So we will need a lot of volunteer. We are also cooperating with the DNR, they are going to provide some volunteers to help us planting the tree. So if you are interested in volunteer, we are going to provide with more information soon to determine which are the specific date, but it's going to be a, a lot of activity. And it was great that, you know, that we got 77 tree because, you know, every tree can be very expensive. So, so, so also Sierra Club is going to be working with us in the Southdale area. So, so everyone is welcome. So I hope for the next meeting I can have more details about the date and time.
Dave, question?
Julia, that's great. Don't forget to contact Digger's hotline. You know, when, when planting that many trees, we make sure we.
Yeah, they usually do that.
Yeah, I just, it's a business I work in and I just feel obligated to have to mention that.
Very important. All right, thank you. Lambers?
No report.
All right, Housing Advisory.
Our next meeting is March 13th.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
Our next meeting's on March 8th.
All right, Finance Committee.
First item, motion to approve Resolution R-15-23 authorizing the redemption of portion of the city's general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2015B dated April 14th, 2015.
Second.
Sent by Dave. And are you letting Misty, Misty speak to this?
Well, since Misty turned on her camera, yes.
All right.
I'm always here for you, no problem. So TID 6, I'm sorry, TID 6 was the TID that we closed last year about this time. There is some external debt that the TID borrowed back in 2015 for the spoken sprocket extensions that is just now available to be prepaid as of April 1st, 2023. So if council approves this resolution, I will then send notice to all the people that lent us the money, letting them know that I plan to prepay this debt and then I'll make that final payment on April 1st. Doing it this way, we shave four years off of the payment and save about $90,000 in interest.
I like that. Any questions at all? All right, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one.
Motion to approve Resolution R-16-23 authorizing payment to Axley LLP for outside legal services in 2023.
Second.
Sent by Jay. Did Finance approve this one?
Finance approved.
All right, and are you speaking to this one?
Yes, I'll give it a shot here. The city uses Axley for outside labor, legal services as authorized by the city attorney throughout the year. And the city has a long, longstanding history with this firm and it has a, you know, pretty good working knowledge of the city processes. So the, the resolution is to pre-approve for services for the year of 2023.
All right, I know we've got a lot of lawsuits that they're helping us with.
This is labor.
Oh, sorry.
We don't, we do not have a lot of labor lawsuits, so I just want to be clear.
Sorry, let me retract that statement. Sorry. All right, I'll just ask if there's any other questions. All right, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one.
Motion to approve Resolution R-23-23 extending the life of tax incremental district number four by two months to improve housing quality and affordability.
Second.
Sent by Jay. And did Finance approve this?
Finance approved, yes.
All right, are you speaking to this one?
Well, I think with Misty Wilson's the complexity of this particular resolution.
Sure. So TID 4, which is the TID that's here by City Hall and then extends all the way up to that new interchange that the TID paid for on Highway 14, that TID is ready to close now too. So we are following a very similar timeline as what we did with TID 6 this, this time last year. Whenever we're ready to close a TID, one of the options that are available under statute is to keep the district open and use one year worth of increment instead of being distributed to the TID or being distributed to the jurisdictions, it would instead be diverted to an affordable housing fund at the city. Under statute, 75% of that money would have to go towards affordable housing, 25% of it could go to general housing. I'm going to be less than $5 million that would be added to that affordable housing fund if this is approved. So this would be the third TID that we've taken advantage of this opportunity for, by far the largest one for us. It is only two months because we want to have the district closed as of April 15th, which is kind of a magic date in the TID realm. So if this is approved tonight, at the next meeting, I will actually refer out the resolution to do the actual closure and then you would act on that the following meeting. And when we do this resolution, we do have to specifically identify what programs we are going to use the affordable housing money for. The three projects that staff is recommending are based on the housing plan that was approved by council and it includes programs that would incorporate affordable units within market rate buildings, reinvesting or rehabilitating multifamily affordable rental housing stock, and then energy efficiency audits and upgrades of existing housing. That's all I have.
All right, Jay.
Yeah, does this also have to be approved by the school districts and the, the technical college group?
It does not. So council has the, is the only vote that's required in order to do this extension, though I'll say we have talked about this in the past with the Joint Review Board during our annual meetings and they all know that we intend to take this opportunity.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else for Finance?
No, nothing else.
All right, anything on personnel?
We meet next on March 8th.
All right, Public Safety, anything?
We approved nine new operators license and one alcohol fermented beverage beer license for the existing hotel up in Kennesaw. That's all we had.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to direct referrals. Does someone want to do a motion on this first one here?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of Resolution R-2823 accepting the 2022 donations.
Second.
Sent by Julia and you want to speak to this, Jay?
Yeah, I can cover this one. So annually, department heads are expected to keep track of any donations that they receive and compile that in a list. That list is shared with administration in, in compliance with our city ordinances. That list is presented to the city council annually in order for the city council to review that list and ultimately accept the donations that have been received by the city for the previous calendar year.
All right, any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that's approved. Let's see, Public Works, Dave, you want to do?
Move approval of Resolution R-3123 authorizing amendment number four with Vebacher for McCoy Intercepter Design.
Sent by Julia, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this one about, Dave?
This was another change with, you know, the project, I think the property boundaries change as we're, we're moving along and it requires a, a slight redesign in it. I believe this change is $31,000. Does that sound right, Chad? This amendment? And this, this was driven by, I believe, a change in the property boundaries, you know, for the project. Not, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a bit of a, you know, when it comes to change orders and amendments, I, I, I'm pretty, you know, I deal with these a lot in my job and I'm pretty stringent on that and I read through and I say, yeah, I, I think they're, they're, this is, this is justified.
I'll also add that this project had been previously bid out and was twice the engineer's estimate, so that's also requiring some additional work to, to make some adjustments to bring this ideally more in line with engineer's estimates.
Thank you, Chad. I forgot about the bad, the bad.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved. Let's see, Randy, you want to do this next one?
Yes, motion to approve Resolution R-34-23 additional approval of the 2023 Dane County Contract for Senior Center Services.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And you want to speak to this?
Sure, the, this was originally approved under R-224-22 back in January, January 24th, 2023, but due to a clerical error, only the addendum to the agreement was included in the packet, not the actual 2023 agreement. So this resolution mirrors the R-224-22 and brings it back to council with the agreement included in the packet.
All right, cleaning this up a little bit. Any questions at all? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved.
Mr. Mayor, prior to this next item, I would, because I have to depart for this item, I would just like to move to amend the agenda so I can do my alter report and get it done so I can just leave.
Yeah, you can do, I'll just, go ahead. All right, I guess we need a second to move Jay's alter report.
Okay.
Sent by Joe, all in favor of moving Jay's alter report to now, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, go ahead, Jay.
So I just had two quick things. One is I did get a few communications from residents about the snow removal and they, they, they were complimentary. I didn't, I didn't get any complaints, but people were particularly talking about the attention the city gave to Sine Road given the dangerous situations we've had there in the past. And the only other thing was that we do have a Sine Road reconstruction meeting with the residents on March 8th at 6:30 and that's all I had.
All right, thank you. And actually, we're not going to do anything on this claim, so that's all right. So on this next one, I'm going to ask someone to table it indefinitely because this person has resubmitted the new claim for a higher dollar amount. And so we'll bring this forward, we'll send it to our insurance company, see what they think and we'll bring it back as a, as a new item so we can post, we can table this indefinitely if someone would like to make that motion.
Sure, I will. Motion to table indefinitely, action on claim, Randy Steinhauer postponed from the January 24th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Sent by Dave. All in favor of postponing indefinitely, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is postponed. All right, Mayor's Report, just two things. One, I, you probably saw on the consent agenda, I just want to mention it for the public that I did refer out a resolution to increase in the future the pay for both the council, the mayor and the judge. It hasn't been updated in 20 years, plus, 20 plus years. If you want to, we can. It's the right time to do it with the mayor's election coming up because you can't change it in the middle of a term. It would change at that time of a, of a election or after that. So it's just the right time. I know people have asked about that. So if people don't. So it's just the right time. I know people have asked about that. So if people don't want to, that's fine. But I know people have asked about that in the past. And so I just wanted to make sure to mention that, uh, before it comes back. Uh, no personnel is gonna talk about it as well. Time had worked out for them to also discuss that. And then at the next meeting, I will refer out the kind of permanent okay to do remote appearances. We've talked about this as well. And it's, you know, just gonna reflect how what we are doing, frankly. And so that will be referred out to the next meeting to come back, meeting after that. Other than that, you know, just kinda echo the thanks to our businesses in Pittsburgh that helped, uh, stepped up to help the senior center. It's a very unfortunate situation for the company that had been taking care of those meals. They had to step away from that. But, uh, very thankful that we have so many generous businesses in the community that are stepping up and helping us out with that. So, uh, from there, I will go to district reports and...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, mayor?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, just in terms of the permanent virtual attendance resolution that's forthcoming, is that gonna include language about the, what we discussed about closed sessions?
Yeah, yeah. It will be the, yeah, for council, yeah, if you are remote, then you can't participate. If you're, if you're remote, you can't participate in the closed session or quasi judicial hearings as well.
Great. Just wanna check on that. Thanks.
Yep. All right, so it is, uh, first meeting of the month, District Three, Shannon.
I have no report.
All right, Jim?
Last week, um, Yehara Materials had a neighborhood meeting at the hop house just to give an update of what they're doing with the Richardson, um, property off of Lacy Road. And, um, basically it's gonna start off as them mining the limestone. So basically a quarry, um, probably for about five, five years. Um, then they wanna do a reclamation in order to actually develop the property. They'll be bringing something to, um, the plan commission probably in March. Um, they did go over a, um, traffic plan, which they will be leaving the site and going down Commerce, which is their primary plan. If traffic gets too heavy, they don't really wanna go across both lanes of Lacy. So then they will head over to Seminole and that would be their, um, secondary, um, plan. At, um, the last resort, they would use Vitrona. They expect to have, um, sixty-eight trucks per day, um, going in and out. So thirty-four trucks actually, but in and out would be sixty-eight. Um, they're gonna be doing some blasting, which they would let the neighborhood, um, know about that. Um, let's see, what else? That's about it for, for now. So they're still in the beginning planning stages. And for the development, they said that they would, of course, consult with Pittsburgh to see what we would like for that site to be. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Uh, no, Jim spoke to the, uh, Minros and Fitch, Pittsburgh Hills, so nothing else to report. Thank you.
All right, Dave?
Um, another thing, I wanna recognize one of our, our residents, Dale Zahoric. I think all you know him from Manning the Poles. Uh, we have a very nice basketball court on the park on Whitney Way, the Western Hills Park. And Dale takes it upon himself to snow blow that out. If he went by on, uh, this weekend, he was out shoveling, shoveling it off the rest of the way. He kinda takes care of that for himself so, so people can be playing basketball year round there. And I just recognize him. He really does a lot for our neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I think it's been mentioned before, but on, uh, Wednesday, March eighth, um, there will be a dedication of the, uh, Francis Huntley Cooper, uh, City of Pittsburgh Council Chambers. It'll be at five P M. here at city hall. So, um, just wanted to open that up to the public to attend.
Thank you. Julia?
No report.
All right, Gabriella?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, a couple things. Uh, I also heard a lot of good feedback about the snow removal. I know we've had quite a few events recently, so thanks so much to public work staff for, for doing that so well. I always hear that people think that Pittsburgh is doing it much better than some other surrounding cities. So, um, it's well-received by, by much of the public. Um, second, there was a pretty horrifying accident, uh, on Fish Hatchery Road a couple days ago. And just wanted to acknowledge all the first responders. There was quite a huge response that was required and, um, it was swift and it was well done. Uh, so thanks to all the first responders that, that dealt with that, um, issue so well. And then the, the third thing, um, that I may, maybe should have mentioned, the transition and transit. But, um, in terms of the Madison Metro bus service, I did flag an issue last week, uh, about Route seventy-five. Um, that has been resolved. There's no problem with that route at all. Uh, I got, got confirmation from that, um, uh, thanks to Tim, uh, reaching out, Tim Volker reaching out. Um, but I do have an overarching concern about the information that the residents have about the switch over. I believe the plan now is for the, the network to switch in June, twenty twenty-three, um, so coming up in four months. And given the fact that we haven't had a transportation engineer, uh, I don't believe there's even any strategic outreach from the city to the residents specifically notifying them about that change. Um, and uh, uh, let me just say, I, I would love to hear from Chad about this too. But I am concerned that there's a lot of people that aren't fully aware of the, that the changes are forthcoming. Um, and I don't know to the level of which Madison Metro is advertising it at the bus stops and on the bus routes. My understanding was that it was not well done during the redesign process or many residents didn't feel like they had enough notice in advance of the redesign process. And so now that the redesign is done and changes are so significant, I'm concerned that there's a lot of people that are not aware that in four months, the routes are changing significantly. And even people that may never, not have had a problem with the redesign in theory, their routes may change significantly even if it's still convenient for them. Um, and that changes their, their transportation considerations on a daily basis. So I've, I'm quite concerned about that. Um, and so since we do have time in February, uh, at the COW meeting, I don't know if it's possible to get some information from Madison Metro about what's happening, uh, in terms of outreach and maybe talk about if we can do some sort of concerted push in the next few months for Pittsburgh residents specifically, um, to make sure that everyone that uses those routes at least has some awareness so they can prepare in the next few months for those changes that are forthcoming.
And staff will reach out to Madison Metro to see what their communication plan is as well and, and look into that. Anything else you want, Chad?
No.
No, what you said is accurate.
All right, excellent. All right, uh, committee of the whole is actually next week. It's one of those weird months where it's not actually the day after a council meeting. It's in between the council meetings. Randy, what's on the agenda?
Tree ordinance discussion. Well, I should say presentation and discussion.
All right, and then council meeting's in two weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Jay?
Second.
Sent by Dave. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. We are adjourned.